It is six P M or August twenty twenty five down. We're helping you to work. I think we're doing some good. I have the United States. Until you're out of the stands, mighty engine, let it out. Neither is wrong. Everything is just a screw up. One for the being here participating in our meeting this evening. We will, uh, there are open forum public comment. Uh, we will begin with Mr. Stephen Litters, seven one Z. He has done seven point.
Stephen Litters, seventh hole, Main Street. I have two things I'd like to talk about. I'll talk about both quickly.
Pick that name, put that just a little bit.
Well, first is, uh, we had recycling picked up this morning. And Waste Pro, when they came and made a presentation, I guess a year or so ago, they said, you know, thirty percent of recycling is all that they recycle. The rest has to go into landfill. Well, they make a lot more money just dumping in the landfill than recycle. And part of the excuse was pizza boxes. Well, most pizza boxes that go in the garbage now come from Publix or no cheese, grease and stuff is like a pizza hot box. So I think we probably need to look into Waste Pro's recycling just a little bit. Second is I want to drive around and I see a lot of people putting, you know, sticks out where their, uh, trash, their parts of furniture out. I don't think a lot of the town residents really know what our rules are about garbage pickup. It might be time for us to send out a notice and these are the things that, you know, you really should do. And maybe the citizens and understanding Waste Pro might help that situation a bit. I don't know if you've noticed it, but I noticed a lot of things put out by the street that don't meet the criteria. A lot of it's, uh, yard waste, you know, that doesn't get packed and stacked and four feet, it just gets dumped and just picked up. They do a good job there. Okay, the second thing I've got is, uh, dirt main between, uh, the Public Works Yard and the tenth. Had a lot of trucks going up and down there, uh, fixing up a tenth. And dirt made in front of my house dropped about three to four inches. It was all that. Happened is now the water goes over the little burn that much in front of my house and goes down, takes a corner at Seventh there, which is walkouts. So what would you do with that thick pile of dirt and some, uh, Public Works pile there? Is maybe if you could spread a little bit back on to, uh, Dirt Main in front of Seventh, Eighth and wherever, and get that burn back in there so the water goes off into the old road railroad right away. Where it's supposed to go. And then you wouldn't have the wash outs down at Seventh. Okay, very simple. Get rid of some of the dirt, this excess over there. We saw a problem of wash outs and Public Works doesn't go have to fix the herds there at Seventh and, uh, dirt now. That's not too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, as always. Next leader is, uh, Baby Hertz, one zero eight two zero B.
Hello, um, I thought that I wouldn't say anything to you guys today because I know you're going to vote on the, um, bathroom locations. But then a couple of people told me that they really thought that I should just tell you one more time how I feel. Um, I'm sure a lot of people feel different ways, but I feel like the bathroom would be best suited for our town to not be next to this town hall building. But the O or close to the library, not necessarily exactly where the cones are, but placed in the right space over in that area. One of my primary reasons for that is that if I was running town hall for an event, um, I would not like people coming from the basketball cup or they're coming from my party. Bathrooms. And I find that, um, a lot of times people are not respectful, um, to other groups when they're in town. So I think that for me, I believe it would be better served the town over there. We had the bathrooms over, um, where they formerly were, where the old, um, office buildings were. That place worked out really well, but that's not a good choice at this point. I really do believe the spot is the one where it really is our best option. And I'm seeing what is just raised with me and, um, we're allowed to have respectful disagreements. But, um, as you think about it, I just really think that I would prefer to see it over there. So thank you for the time.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Next is, uh, Ms. Grace Gugliello, two one five, Butler.
Grace Gugliello, two fifteen Butler Street. Um, I apologize for missing a previous meeting, but having Amy Dubal read on my behalf. I don't feel that I need to repeat what I said before because I felt that I got my message through to you all. But I didn't want to just reiterate, you know? I've put a lot of effort into this town since I was in elementary school at Windermere Elementary. We've worked to preserve the location of the town schoolhouse. And just the, the amount of work that the youth needs to put into this community, I think is important to realize. And so that's what I'm doing here. Um, this is a town that I hopefully one day will raise my family in and, and generations to come. I, I think that it's important to understand that while this may be a solution now, I don't think it's in the best interest of the future of the town. Putting it next to the library, to the right of the library, I think would be more beneficial in agreement with Vicki. And I know many other residents have also agreed with us. Um, we went door to door, asked for people to sign a petition. And based on the feedback, not a single person, but one had said that they truly just didn't care about the location. Most were in agreement with it being by the library. So I think it's important to take that into consideration and I hope that you all do take that into consideration with your vote tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Grace. At this time, Chief Ogden will swear in our new leader, Police Officer, Anita Sane.
Thank you, Mary, and, uh, good evening to the mayor and to the council members, to our residents, uh, police officers here and all our guests. I have this distinct honor and privilege of swearing in, um, our actual minor police officer, which means we're at a hundred percent, which is really awesome to be at a hundred percent in this day and age. Uh, Ms. Anita Sane, Anita comes to us, uh, from Lake, Lake County Sheriff's Office where she was a records custodian up there. She actually was born in New York and moved down here just a couple of years ago. She's joined today with her family that is out in the audience. Thank you guys for coming. So it's clearly having family is an important part for her. Uh, she started, uh, last week with us and she's already in the midst of training. So the next couple of weeks she'll see her out there on the road. When you get an opportunity, make sure you stop her and say hello. We're excited for her to join the team today. So with that, Anita will raise your right hand or repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Anita Sane.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect and defend.
That I will support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The State of Florida.
The State of Florida.
And the ordinances of Windermere.
And the ordinances of Windermere.
That I am qualified to serve in a position as police officer.
That I am certified to qualify as the position of the police officer.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the town of Windermere.
For the town of Windermere.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Put your badge on here and I think you might have, we'll take some pictures and your family is welcome to come up as well. Mom, I'll try not to start with the practice. So you'll be okay here.
Thank you, Congress.
Thank you.
Bye. You look awesome.
And you're welcome to come on. And on the background, you're in the conference.
Say, your money is a wonderful opportunity. And by the way, you don't have to call me off, saying you can call me Anita. Yeah, trust me, I'm sure it's not, it's not so over to me. But thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here.
Well, Mayor, your team doesn't say we're fully staffed again.
I know.
Tonight, we have a proclamation for Healthy West Orange. Go in here. All right, our proclamation for Healthy West Orange inspires healthy behaviors and provides resources to help residents make better lifestyle choices. And whereas Healthy West Orange champions healthy programs that deliver health and wellness activities. And whereas Healthy West Orange Unites Health-Minded Organizations For Whom A Healthy Community Provides Meaningful Benefits. And Healthy West Orange Advocates For A Healthy Community, For Healthy Community Decisions And Encourages Local Leaders To Keep Their Communities' Health And Wellness A Top Priority. And Healthy Wellness Confers That The Third Friday In September As The Annual West Orange Healthy Safety Day. Selfie Day, not a safety day, so. We'll need safety too, though.
Yeah.
It is my great pleasure and privilege as the mayor of the town of Windermere to declare Friday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty five, as West Orange Healthy Safety Day. And in celebration of the ninth anniversary of Healthy Selfie, I urge all citizens to join in supporting this initiative. I want to thank you for being here tonight. If you'd like to take a few words and we'll, we've got our T-shirts, we'll make sure we
Yeah.
We get those as well. Tracy?
Thank you so much. Um, you all have supported us from the beginning with every Healthy Selfie, uh, month that we've done and appreciate the proclamation for the day. And I would love to have a picture with the commission and at least folding your T-shirts up. And we look forward to the rest of the community joining us this year with Healthy Selfie, get engaged.
Thank you very much. Um, we can, um, do that as a flag if you guys don't mind. Yes, we'll give you a sign, of course. Oh, you got a simple? City's complete. So it's multi-saver year.
Yeah, but I gotta say, um,
I suppose even I knew that wasn't a problem. Next up, Brad, Zara Dean's physician, the Bojim. Uh, Brad, you're going to present the town square concept plan for council's approval.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mayor, again, Brad, what is to do, trim serving as a contractor town planner? Uh, so what we have before you this evening for your consideration for approval is the final concept plan for town square. Uh, just a little quick, quick, quick background. Um, as you know, we went through a public process with Charette, the public survey. And then we had a workshop with the town council in April. Uh, so what we presented in April was our draft concept plan. But we received feedback and comments from town council at that meeting. Um, and we made some updates to the concept plan based on the feedback received. And also on July seventeenth, seventeenth, Chris Thompson, my local art player, was here with me today. Um, he met with the tree board to talk about this concept plan with them as well. And so we have also incorporated some of their feedback as part of what's before you this evening. Uh, for your consideration, what I would like to do, Mayor, so okay, just go through the things that have changed from what we talked about before and what we've updated. So one of the things we've done here related to the bathroom issue is we have a notation which you see under letter G. Um, actually, what you see on the screen and on the board over there is what's in your agenda packets. Um, but we have a notation in here that says the town is considering alternative location of the proposed bathroom that is different than shown on the concept plan. So we want to just recognize that on this constant plan because we know that decision as I'm standing here right now, hasn't finally been made yet. Um, the other important part to remember, this is a concept. So nothing that's on here is set in stone, will have to be done as it's shown. It's a guide for the town moving into the future. So this can be adjusted and changed as the town council feels appropriate as they move forward. But hopefully this does provide you that guide moving to the future. Um, the other thing that we've added again as a notation where we recognize that the parking on Forest and on E six could be not just park parking, but could also be designed for golf cart. So accommodate either both of those or, or golf cart. Again, that's just recognizing an option if this moves forward when you actually get to final design. That's when that final determination would be made on how you want to do that. But here in the concept plan, we're recognizing that that's a potential that could happen um, with, with this area. Um, some parking that were removed, we had some parking that we showed uh, on the library loading area. So we removed that parking so we don't have a conflict with the library loading, loading area behind the library. Um, and then the comments received from the tree board is that, you know, they were very not very important and so do we. Um, that the parking on six, you know, to make sure it has out of a distance from the existing trees, protection of the tree, um, the protection zone. Again, those are things that would be addressed when you would go into final design, the actual layout on how this would happen. But we are recognizing that need in this concept. Um, they also supported the idea of the golf cart parking, which we've already addressed. And they had a general comment where it said hard escape and other elements throughout town square need to be designed to minimize impact on trees in the critical root cell. Including the design of the entrance to the library to avoid the mag, I'll just say magnolia. Can't say the whole word. Uh, so we did include that notation on the concept plan. And just showing the importance as this goes forward. If this goes forward, I should say, into final design, that, you know, the protection of the trees is something that's considered in the final design. So those are the changes that we made from what was presented at April workshop. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have, and me and again, Chris here, if you have any more specific questions about the design. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Brad, and just to summarize real quick, so much like the downtown master plan that we've used for many years as guiding instrument in how we move forward. Concepts, designs, uh, planning. This will serve as the same type of tool and not, not set in stone, always according to council rule, like it's a set general, uh, bedrock foundation of what we feel. But is there likely to be, so we can make good decisions. So it's a good summary.
That's a good summation, only correction I would make, Mayor, just so your town-centered design guidelines are actually codified.
They are.
In your land development code, so there is a difference, but your concept and as you explained it exactly.
Thank you, I appreciate you for your presentation. As council, any questions for Brad?
Oh, I, I have, I mean, yes, sir, because I know there's still a concept, so it's not too late. Um, when we did develop our hotel, we took into consideration quite effectively, by the way, residents on that street to avoid overflow from development on six, make sure that hotel stayed residential. I feel like you're doing a great job of making the same effort on Forest. Uh, one caveat would be that I would like to see that dumpster that's they all there, Brad, you know, maybe move over to Q, near Q. Just on six, near the V D. So that the five or six residents on Forest, so that here the dump truck that would be there a lot a little bit later. But you know where you want, you know, probably walk over west. You know, there's a lot of kids aren't going to want that street, personally, I know it's been happening in some of those homes. But lots of consideration with that, they all could be moved over to the more commercial area, which will be near Q, probably given a couple of parking spots there. Um, because, you know, like I said, nobody's going to dump truck or, uh, and down the street and, uh, even if there is a gate around it, they're always taking, they're always messing. There's always people like me using them on weekends. Um, I mean, well, if I try to see the way, instead of picking up my front yard or dumpsters, I'll make a decent one. Um, and I do want to make sure we do some all these considerations to just golf, our parking on Forest, even six.
Yeah, 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 for that.
Those three guys did a great job of doing that.
That's true. The only comment I would say about maybe moving the dumpsters queue is Brad's thought. I haven't talked to Chris, but is, is at that corner, you know, how we're proposing to move the nine eleven memorial up there as well is we're trying to create kind of this focal point of, of community pride right there at that corner between if the nine eleven memorial gets moved there, you've got the patriotic horse across the street. And I just have a hard time thinking in the dumpster next to that, that, that would be my concern. And it doesn't mean it can't happen.
Yeah.
But I do think, I know that there has been discussion that the dumpster on screen, current location, you all know that it's an issue. And I know that Sav, who's been working library and, um, Steve, I somehow lose maybe less same in one pickup or two separate companies, you kind of waste so much noise. So I know that it's on radar with or without the, the concept plan is on there.
And I'm glad, happy with this history. If, if in all of this discussion that could be worked out, it'd be good for people to live there. Uh, the library does have a town show, except that they don't know as much as this, it's not a two. No, not after, but just a consideration you guys have tossed up around. I know you've been figuring that out. So during this, I'm giving you some.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a couple of comments. Um, I would also agree with the parking on some bathroom, I think it would be nice. I mean, I'm not super keen on parking being there, but if we're getting a parking, I think it would be nice to have some dedicated golf cart spots. Um, I know when I come over to golf cart, I don't want to utilize, you know, an actual parking spot for a car, but I can fit somewhere else. Um, I did have a, uh, somebody suggest that maybe there could be curb stops so that it would prevent larger vehicles from parking if we do make it golf carts. Um, which of course is what has to be marked so it's not a tricking hazard. Um, my other comment, and this will be really more of a personal comment. I, I like the nine eleven memorial where it is. Um, I worked in New York City for six years, I have a lot of friends that lost people from nine eleven. And I just feel like it's where it's at now is a peaceful place, it's a place where people can be over there and reflect on whatever it is that they need to, what they have for nine eleven. And I just don't feel like a spot out in the front by the roundabout with all the traffic there makes no sense, my, my personal opinion. And I, I know we have a horse out there that was dedicated for Esther Betschgen's son. But I also have a lot of people saying, you know, they're concerned that something might get hit. Because we do have a lot of accidents, we do have a lot of big trucks that come through town. And it just doesn't to me seem like a good location for a memorial.
Thank you.
Otherwise, other than avoiding the trades like tree board wreck.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Yes. See that link for our motion to approve the town square concept plan. Motion to approve, question to approve, council person, what have you seen, seven council person, seated in voting, council persons. I. I.
I.
I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, y'all. Thank you, Brad. Appreciate, uh, we sure can start work on this and, uh, yes, it's a good one, next topic. Excellent, forward with shit. Next up is the town square, about three locations. Board option.
We basically just have the numbers that were requested. John, unfortunately, he's not here, he's still in Colorado. Um, but these are the projections that he provided to us. Um, but I'm not sure what other questions we can answer as far as the, the, the biggest question I think was, what was the cost difference?
Right.
And can it fit there? And it can't fit there, but it's in the cost of the movement.
I should, so I will then enter the comments from council.
So, uh, I know we had a discussion with John, but there are some, uh, different costs that I just had questions on. Uh, specifically some of the utilities, uh, electrical, uh, seem to be bit higher than I was expecting. And also that all of the general apartment, shared conditions, uh, percentage um, soft cost below or carry through the higher construction costs would kind of, um, influence the library location and think a little bit more, as those most possible probably be the same for me to the program, just in period, real percentage. So, um, I'm not sure if you know that like electrical, is that being both the library or?
It would be separate, I believe, I believe that's a pull from, uh, fifth and fourth.
That's where the totally drops for the temporary facilities, right?
Yes, sir.
And then, um, one thing I didn't see in the cost with loss and setting, I saw the cost of setting be, be in both locations, but I didn't see with the cost where it was invested.
I really want to talk to John, the cost is going to be exactly the same whether we locate it in stock here or we.
Any, any number that you, just with my word magnitude?
No, actually, what we did is we called three septic companies out and we had them look there and we had them provide three quotes to determine what we were looking at in septic costs for the new septic. The range of those both were very similar, um, in, in the same ballpark, so everybody is around the same.
How much is it?
About just one second. I believe it was between forty and fifty thousand dollars.
And then last question, um, you have a twenty thousand dollar, eight million design cost for the higher vegetation, that more we've spent on in, uh, the total, um, the whole of it.
So the town hall architect was a historical architect that I So the town hall architect is a historical architect that are not only bringing for us. We don't need a historical architect, so we asked Mr. Fury, it's also the cost to use a normal architect to sign a resting facility for that location, so that twenty thousand is for them to do the, um, design and the plans for that facility.
We've only carried that design, awesome, right?
We've only carried this one through concept, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I have a couple of questions, and most of them, a lot of them were the same as what, um, Tommy said, because I also noticed that, like, for the concrete. It says seventy dollars per square foot for the library, but fifty seven dollars and fifty nine cents per square foot. I generated a difference in the amount of concrete that's required based on, you know, longer distance to sidewalk or whatever, but with the same footprint, I would have thought which would be one may have more actual square footage needed, but not a different rate for the cost of the concrete per square foot. Um, and then also similar with the electric, I had similar questions because, you know, I would think that any master facility is going to have to have an air conditioning system, it's going to have to have whether they do dryers or, and you know, paper towels as well as lighting, and I would think that either one would require a new electric panel, I, I wouldn't think if it was located here that it would have enough space on the existing circuit rail panels to be able to run it, I know even with the electric equipment or the air conditioning system, usually we have to provide sub panels to them. Um, so I would think those costs would be similar, and, and I felt a little bit like, yes, some things seem a little higher on the library side, so, you know, maybe we can get some answers for those. Um, I also, I
So I can answer your first question about the, the concrete, okay, so here outside at the back, we were just pouring a slab and placing the resting facility on there, there's no extra sidewalk, so ADA sidewalks or, or entryway necessary here, that was all programmed as part of this, but you're, you're probably gonna have to do more sidewalk stuff, or you can expect somebody to to wheel a wheelchair across the grass and the dirt to parking, I mean, a rushing facility back by the, the library. So that's what those costs are, when we talk about standard that the town has for sidewalk corners, it's six inches, and I think a lot of places before in the Delta standard is six inches, so that would, that would contribute to the difference probably in the concrete cost here, but Mr. Fury was that estimate.
The footprint that will be the same.
Yeah, I, I can't suppose, so it's the, it's the dollar value on and, and the square foot. So the facility is the same square footage for both the, the main items, and just the cost is additional, so you have an additional probably sixty eight hundred, uh, dollars per square of the library location for the council, additional site, most kind of it's just providing by the square foot.
It's like a factor related, but I meant that number, but that's a
It's kind of off, and it's odd, and it's
Right, right.
And the same thing, so that's why I was asking, probably, I mean, additional costs to bring the service from the corner over to the location versus
Right, and we have a lot of the locals surrounding us here, they don't, you have to go from fifth and fourth starting.
Um, the other thing is, is I, I was not at July tree board meeting, but I did speak with, um, a couple members of the tree board, and my understanding was she would catch and move the tree with the location that was staked out, it would be just removing a limb, so I think there would be a little bit less cost on the tree line, I guess, as well. Um, and, and the vegetation terms of shrubs are not equal between two locations. Um, so, you know, my only other comment would be is that, um, I did send out a message today, uh, give various groups that I have, and got a little bit of feedback, people again, they asked about the cost differences that I was asking questions tonight, and, uh, a few other people, uh, one has expressed it, uh, and I mean, I'll say there are, but Ms. Rose, so that she doesn't have a preference for location, um, and Martine, so based on the cost that she would like to see it at the back or over the ladder. So there was a little bit of commentary back and forth about that. So I, I'm still a bigger on that, because what's the journey the rest?
You know, it happens, like, until at the end of the day. You know, we obviously we're always concerned about costs, but this kind of seems this difference seems like a I think that we we're all on intents and purposes, and probably just
Sorry, one more comment, Molly, it's it, I don't want to forget, she says she thinks it should be a little bit smaller, it's totally
How about this?
Thanks. Um, wait, um, staff, thank you for doing all the sort of pieces we asked and guys delivered everything actually asked for, um, and looked at all the options, a lot of it wasn't popular at the beginning, probably isn't right now. Um, but I want to go ahead and make a motion to put it out of the library.
Well, I was gonna say something, but I read that motion, I was like, oh, you're still but he said, but let's answer your government motion, so we have a motion, but the council person leaves the point, so my library location. Second, I believe, from the council person, that correct? Council, further comments, questions, concerns? See none, anybody?
Aye.
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 Motion, uh, to place the library, I'm sorry. Here goes four to one. Thank you, it's, thank you, staff, have all the action for, appreciate that. Never low maintenance. And you can never low maintenance, next up is golf cart analysis.
Mr. Mike Woodwork from Kenley Horn, who was our subject under that sort of transportation engineer, so to see who presented those items. Mr. Woodward.
All right, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't, I was okay, I'll continue. Sorry, I I was looking this way, I'm so sorry, Mike Woodward with Kenley Horn, um, been serving the town as a, as a transportation engineer since around twenty twelve, right around there. Um, here before you today to talk about a golf cart crossing analysis that we performed recently, where we looked at evaluating additional crossings. Um, there are some existing crossings currently, there's, there's a few of them in our study area, um, there's one on Main Street and Second Avenue. There's one on Main Street and Eighth Avenue, there's one on Sixth Avenue and Magnolia Street, so there's a few existing golf cart crossings, the goal here was to look at whether we should modify some of those locations or add new ones, next slide, please. Again, this map shows which ones were our study area versus the ones where there's an existing crossing, uh, the study area is in, is in it's kind of like black right now, and then blue are the existing crossings, um, one of them we looked at was, was Magnolia and Sixth Street, which has an existing crossing, but we did evaluate that location, next slide, please. Um, I'll start out with Main Street and the two crossings that we considered at this location. Um, again, we looked at Fifth Avenue where there's the roundabout, and we looked at Seventh Avenue, which is between the Sixth Avenue Roundabout and the existing golf cart crossing that's at Eighth Avenue. Um, what we found are, go, go back, please, what we found are that there are low side street volumes. Um, and while you, while we perform this type of analysis, there are some criteria that we need to follow. Um, several of the criteria, most of them were met, including the volumes were low enough to, to consider adding, uh, uh, golf cart crossings at these locations, so that did not become a factor in, uh, uh, any of the recommendations. Ultimately, really, the, the site-specific observations were, are what gonna, are what guided our recommendations, so, um, at Fifth Avenue, we did have, I, I said relatively lower queuing, right, that word is relative. Um, compared to what we've seen in, at, along Sixth Avenue as well as south on Main Street, um, Fifth Avenue definitely does stack up, so please don't interpret that to mean that there's a, 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 a short queue, it's just compared to some of the other directions, um, it's, it is lesser. Uh, we felt like that Main Street and Fifth does have a good amount of spacing from the second avenue crossing. Um, it is, it is awfully close to the Sixth Avenue crossing, but because there's a roundabout there, it does give that ability of, of drivers to have the expectation that they do need to slow down at that location anyways, so comparing it to, um, an un controlled location where there's, uh, stop sign for the side streets, but the Main Street just gets to go through, um, this does have that, that sort of turbulence, and, and there's already a lot going on there, so, um, it, it, it doesn't that, that makes me less concerned about the distance. Um, if there was nothing there, then that distance I would, I would feel like was, was awfully close. So now at Seventh Avenue. Um, this is near the existing crossing at Eighth Avenue, um, and there's also a queue backup, it's at Sixth Avenue. Because there's an existing crossing at Eighth, which is just about four hundred feet away, um, it would be a redundant location that would really serve a lot of the same purposes as the crossing at Eighth. And given that there are, um, th- there's a relatively short distance from the roundabout, um, we felt like Eighth Avenue, I felt like Eighth Avenue is a better location for the crossing than Seventh Avenue. And I would recommend that you do not put crossings at every single street, because, uh, that's just a standard practice for, for, for signage in the, in the it's a standard engineering practice to try to limit the amount of traffic control devices that we have, limit the amount of signs. Um, and that's basically because drivers can, uh, we want them to focus on the road, want them to focus on what they're doing, every now and then, if you put up a sign, we would like drivers to read those signs, and so when there's too many of them, it just kind of can be overwhelming, also, um, sometimes people don't care for the aesthetics of it, my approach is more just based on the effectiveness. And too much of, too many signs can really spread out that area where people are supposed to be paying attention to things and, and lead to some um, driver expectations that, that we really don't want, so um, again, I'd recommend limiting the number of crossing locations, and you've got a pretty good one at Eighth Avenue, so on Main Street, I recommend keeping the one on Eighth. Not implementing a crossing at Seven. And going ahead and adding a crossing at Fifth, you'd have to have some signage approaching the roundabout, and once you go to the east, the road pretty quickly dead ends, that's where the pocket park is, so um, it's my understanding that the town is currently considering some options at Pocket Park, and I would just say that, um, it would, if you could find a way to have an opening that's a little bit wider than the five feet there, I've got some pictures later, but, um, that, that would help golf carts connect from Main Street over to Oakdale, and then out into the eastern portion of the town. Uh, next slide, please. So these are where I was mentioning, where you could put some signage for the roundabouts, just a couple of places that make sense. Um, I think they'll fit, and, and we could make this work without really any additional concerns about having that operation happen at the roundabout, next slide, please. Look at this picture, it's, it's a little bit faded with the lighting, but, um, there's a lot of things in the way if we're gonna make a connection through Pocket Park. That existing gate is about five feet wide, um, your standard golf cart is about four feet wide, so if you're driving nice and slow, that's six inches on each side, which is, uh, that's kind of challenging for, for best drivers. Um, it's really not light enough, it's not intended for golf carts to pass through there, so again, um, if there's, if there's potential to sort of work in some reconfiguration as you're considering the pocket park, if you can find a way to cross from uh, uh, Fifth over, then that would be helpful for golf carts, where exactly you do that, I think, I think I'm a bit agnostic to it, it could work whether you're kind of at the north end of the park, the middle, the southern, it, it's fine, whatever's gonna work for the rest of the park to make it beautiful, but please put a path there for golf carts, otherwise, it doesn't make sense to have much of a crossing of Main Street if it's just not gonna go anywhere. So, um, that's a bit of an asterisk or a contingency on the recommendation for the for the crossing at Fifth, is that it really doesn't, it's not gonna get you much unless there's a connection over to Oakdale. Next slide, please. As far as Sixth Avenue, again, we looked at two locations, there's an existing crossing on Magnolia, there is not an existing crossing at Oakdale, we considered both locations. We found similar traffic levels, um, the volumes were low enough to really not give us concern, um. One of the criteria that we have to consider is, is the striping, right, is there a stop bar that's visible, and and you really don't have that in the dirt roads, but that's okay, because people are going awfully slow. Um, typically, you, you want to, to meet all of the criteria, but in this case, I think everyone driving those roads knows that they need to come to a stop when they get to Sixth Avenue. Um, so, so the fact that there's not a stop bar is, is less of a concern here due to the low speeds on the dirt roads. Um, back to the crossing locations. The Oakdale Street is, is the first, Oakdale Street is the first street east of Main Street, um, so that queue that sort of backs up from the roundabout, um, it extends about as far as you can see. Right, the road curves, you just, you just can't see the end of it, you could walk to the curb and keep looking, you, you still can't see the end of the queue. Um, cars back up there in the afternoon, when we visited the site, it was during school, uh, when school was pickup time was occurring, and really not telling anybody what you don't already know right now, like, that's a, that's a long queue. Um, and so when people do need to cross, you sort of need to make eye contact with the driver and wait at him, and then they'll stop and let you go through. I would prefer to, for that interaction to happen a little bit farther away from the, uh, roundabout, because as you approach the roundabout, you were like, okay, it's my turn, I've just been waiting in this queue for I don't know how many minutes, but, but long enough, so once you're getting a little bit closer, you, you start to get a little bit more, all right, it's almost my turn, I better, I better be paying attention now, and so to add an additional crossing at that location, when there's already one that's four hundred feet away, seems like it's not prudent, and I would not recommend switching the locations of the cross, crossings, um, of Sixth Avenue. Slide, please. That really wraps it up, I already kind of mentioned how I don't recommend putting them on every single street for the, the, just sort of standard, standard engineering practice of not having an oversaturation of, of signage or traffic control devices.
Now, so any questions? Yeah.
Um, so I'm happy to hear about the, the avenue, um, and the top part, I, I I see what you're saying about the path, I will, in a, a, I drive the ballpark, I think, I think we are used to it, we just hold our mirrors in.
Yeah.
And then you go through, and there's lots of people using, um, playground park.
Yep.
Um, currently, we, I don't, I don't, who has golf carts on the council, but um, we usually go to the center, and that's because right now they're on the right and left, there is a sidewalk. So we're staying off the sidewalk because that's where the pedestrians are. Uh, my understanding is that prior to the five hundred block, we developed uh, actually some of ours, as well as some parts, would go kind of on the southern edge of Pocket Park.
Yeah.
But like, we were technically all test passing it, so once they started building that, place became non. So people currently are using it through the center. Um, this has nothing to do with your review, but I will say that you need to maybe discuss about the ordinance now, because our official ordinance now that we adopted uh, shows it going here as being a place that they are allowed to take golf carts now, so I'm not sure if that's a question, but that's not where it comes, Mr. Ward. So, uh, there's seven, and, uh, the crossing in Sixth Avenue, I know you said there's two redundant, there's the one from, um, Magnolia, and you were looking at Oakdale. And for Seventh Street, I said, or well, in addition to Eighth, but I remember back in December when we talked about this, you explained that, you know, one of those have too many locations. And so the whole that I had in mind was to have Seven in place of instead of Eighth Street and Oakdale instead of Magnolia Street. And for all of the reasons that you say, the queuing, um, you know, that it's backed up, it is backed up for a long ways. That's exactly the reason why it's easier to cross at those locations, at Seventh and Oakdale. Because you do have to make that contact, but uh, and the reality is, is people who are leading the roundabouts who had east courts or land they're just now coming out of the roundabout, we've got a gap, they, you see them, they see you when you're turning around, the other people stop. We made eye contact with them, and you may do little waves and everything else, and then you cross. Once you get out to Eighth Street, that traffic is getting much faster because they're, you know, we're coming to the roundabout, they're weighing five, ten miles an hour, by the time they start approaching Eighth Street, they're off to full speed at thirty miles per hour. So that's kind of my concern, the traffic heading eastbound is much, much faster at Eighth Street than it is Seventh Street, regardless of what it does. Um, and the same holds true for coming from, like, coming out by the art studio at Seventh Street. Uh, the, Mr. Street, Tom Street, and I both, you know, said that we both, our golf cart center, he comes to my side of town, where people can know, as I go to that side of town. We both, you said, um, preference, because it's what is state per or, um, well, you don't do it anymore, we don't do it anymore. Yeah. So I mean, so for those reasons, I, you know, I I understand everything that you said, but the whole reason I was, I wanted to leave her in, at a location in addition to the ones that exist, but they're thus replacing, it's, uh, because I don't know if, if we don't change them, I mean, I don't like to cross If if we don't change them, I mean, I don't like to cross them at Eighth Street, I've talked, I do know one neighbor sitting in the back. That um, also lives in my quadrant of town, so. Unless somebody's coming to visit somebody in the southeast quadrant, or unless you live in the southeast quadrant, it's not, you know, they're not experiencing a pain. But that would be my concern, because Faith and I have the full analysis that you did rather than just a PowerPoint presentation. It seems like all the locations are technically okay and within the limits. And if this is kind of like a divergery by intersection, which one of the residents of the southeast quadrant want, you feel that is what works. And there's nothing that, is there a full report that says that it would be a bad location? My opinion is still that it would be better for those residents to have somewhere where that traffic is stopped. I mean, you can be at Sixth Street anytime you do.
Mm-hmm.
That queue is passed, it's on that, but it's not always passing. So, there's always that stop traffic, so then you're really only getting passed one. You only have to cross the one lane, the other thing is you, you know, we don't pull out, they don't see us, and they're not gonna bring us the thumbs up, even. When we're like, okay, they're waiting, and then the, so the line is moving up, right, into the roundabout, and they're still waiting, and I'm waiting for a break. From the eastbound traffic, they still wait. And then they might show, we got, you know, because it only takes them a few seconds, I've never had it even not, after they, you know, given me the thumbs up, basically. So, I I, what my, I guess part of my question would be, if if we're not, if you want to say the other, what would you recommend for a solution? From that perspective, because, like, did you guys go out on the golf cart, did you?
What what do you mean by a solution, I'm not sure.
Because residents in the southeast quadrant feel that it's not the safer locations to cross, the ones that are existing now.
Yeah, so, like, I totally agree with you that the the concerning traffic is the is the traffic that's leaving the roundabout.
Yes.
Right, that is, that is, that is going faster than the traffic that's approaching because of the queues.
Right.
Um. While we were out there making observations, um, it seemed like people were getting up to speed pretty quick from the roundabout. Um, I mean, you mentioned leaving at five miles per hour. Operating speeds are typically higher than that in the roundabout, and and so I didn't. Notice a significant difference in speeds at the two location, and so still. Think that the uh, or would recommend that the location with better separation. Get you uh, more distance from the location that's having a whole lot of activity. Um, I don't have speed data to to show that they're going significantly faster, uh, a little one block away. So, so I just, I just don't, I can't really comment on the speed other than while we were there and making observations, it didn't seem different.
Did you guys actually try to like cross?
Yeah, we walked across, definitely.
Did you try to go?
No, I did not rent a golf cart for this, but I I imagine it's easier to to drive a golf cart across than it is to walk across. Um, golf carts can go a little bit faster, I still made eye contact with people waving at them. It was really tough looking the other direction to make sure that traffic leaving the roundabout was was gonna notice that that we were there. Um, golf carts are larger and easier to see than than humans, so I don't, I don't feel like that in any way invalidates the analysis.
Right, if I'm, if I'm crossing the street anywhere in town, and I had to put my hands to walk out, traffic stops. I, you know, I've talked with the chief and uh, deputy chief Bob in the past about the fact that, according to our statutes. If you have designated crossing for a golf cart, then cars are supposed to, uh, yield to the golf cart crossing.
Uh, I.
I'll find the statute.
Okay.
But anyway.
I don't think I've seen that, and when you're in a ball, you should, you, I would strongly suggest that you wait, wait for a gap, make that contact and proceed cautiously.
You know, I'm not saying I would just pull out front, I'm better, they don't do golf cart, but they do yield to a human. Like, I could walk, I could jaywalk across any part of town, and if I go like this and walk out, I wouldn't be able to walk out, but if you're sitting there and golf carts waves. They don't give you the same courtesy.
Like, um, Councilman Haynes, is the question that. On this, you feel West Seventh, which is not noted as a recommended crossing, is a better option for crossing than West Eighth, is that what you're trying to ask? Mike?
Yes.
Oh, so that's what you're trying to ask.
Redundancy, I I think redundancy of it being close to another location is good, because. The intent that we set in December was never to keep hope, it was one or the other, either Seventh or Eighth, and Oakdale or Magnolia.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, reality is, we go back six, seven years. We have studied down how my southeast quadrant and. The results in the study were that we don't count touch through the pump room. The residents continued to push from southeast quadrant. We did the diverter, we did have a touch your problem, we had, in fact, one of those old results. We had a hundred and seventy-two cars in a day coming down, making trips on Oakdale, unlucky if I see four cars a day now.
I, that seems, well, I do, I have turning movement counts that we took for this analysis, and and the volumes were were comparable from before. The diverged was was put in, they're lower.
First block, yeah, we still have residents asking to close that street, which section of street are you referring?
So that, the counts were taken at Sixth Avenue in Oakdale, and they're they're pretty much, well, they're uh, they they. It went from about eighteen vehicles in the peak hour to thirteen. So for that first block, yes, and I understand that once you get to the diverge, where there's not gonna be many, many vehicles that are gonna continue now, because. You, they have to take a different route, but the total that are entering at Oakdale reduced from about eighteen to thirteen in the. I I guess that was twenty eighteen, so seven years.
Right, but we haven't done a traffic counter after it's been in place now for two or three years, I think.
Just, that's what I'm saying, we we took, oh, I'm second block.
Right, I'm saying between Seven and Seven on Oakdale.
Yeah, yeah, that's no, but we have, we have traffic counts for this analysis.
Residents coming to me on the regular, I've had conversations with the broker, I've had emails from residents who live in that block. Three of the residents of the four that live in that block that still want Sixth Street closed. And, be- because they're still.
We're talking about closing shoes, I.
No, I just say, I'm just saying.
We're talking about conference.
I'm, what I'm trying to say, that was a resident driven project, because we saw problems. We saw the need, Mr. Martin, he came up with that solution and it worked, we have a problem. Crossing into and out that under on golf carts. So, I mean, I see, I understand what the study's saying, so I, it, that's, that's what the residents who are in that quadrant said. I spoke with the careers, I spoke with pilgrims, I spoke with Hannah, uh, London, that, sorry, about her husband Steve Danner, but. Them, myself, um, and then the next door neighbors who are renters. There's new neighbors that just moved in, you know, in the summer, they have a golf cart as well, so, I mean, you know.
So.
So, yeah, please.
But you're just verified working what you shared. What, are you, are you saying the preferred crossing, your six is?
Okay.
Is that, is that it?
Correct. And then preferred location crossing, in the center part of like, you know, south of Sixth Avenue. Is Seventh Street by the art studio rather than Eighth.
Maybe I'm a social circle around about, I need other thoughts.
It is, I mean, I know, you don't prefer going to the roundabout, but we can't hear none of that, so.
Yeah, I wish it were, yeah, I would, I would use a different, because I'll say it's sixth and Oakdale, because. Especially now with the five hundred block below. Turnout lane, just, just to the west of that. You're gonna have distracting drivers looking for the turnout lane before they're really going to the golf cart. You're just inviting, interaction with them or not, maybe pretty quick at all. So I, I believe Magnolia is the better, the better spot for that, as do, I think, the the Eighth Avenue crossing. There's a lot of distractions between Seventh and Sixth on on Main Street as well, so, and I would argue, Mike, that. We may put a list, look at the Fourth Avenue and Main crossing. Back that up a little bit. In in lieu of the Fifth.
Bit back, you know, about residents in town who live in that back quadrant, residents from the other parts of town, so we have to go to this.
The Fifth Avenue crossing is actually easiest because it's rip. Both blocks right here, Fourth and, between Sixth and Fifth, and Fifth and Fourth, all ripped. Everybody's slow there, I can use that one, that's, that's what happens, and that's gonna be. The chart, when we get out on the asphalt on Main, South Main, and East Six, it's a totally different animal. Um, I think they should say on Eighth and Magnolia also, um. I think it's where, we're going down a, a fifth hole here already, um.
Well, we also have an issue with, to. Bring it to, we'll bring it to the park, or we'll try to turn that park into something much nicer than running this around the. Previously, we had that, there, that property on the side, you know, that. That served that very, very well, now that is gone, so if you go to that park now significantly narrow, I was kind of surprised. So significantly narrow than it, it was, um. From a visual perspective and from a, again, it's obviously using something else. I think, so, I can figure out a solution for that, for any new car, certainly, moving through the center of the park, certainly not. There you go, uh, with the, with the, like, signing, and plenty of iron force there, so I'm gonna have to look at that. And I'm not opposed to, like, look at that, say. It's it's an extra burden, and we don't have that ten feet, maybe six feet of crossing, uh, you know. Perhaps, you know, take that out of the side, so it's gonna have. Yeah, I I mean, I guess the, the. Sorry.
Okay, um, but I get, I need to, I'm questioning for a minute, the, like, um. Question, is it an hour preference or safety or? I think that's, I think, I will not, I did not, I will not cross, um, at Magnolia asphalt. With my dog on the golf cart, I have not ever, and I, and again, the chief and fun and gears here. But ever since I've clocked my golf cart, I've actually up until, um, September eleventh of last year. Taken the roundabout, Sixth Avenue, because of the fact that I've been coming out from the art studio. Make a right on to Sixth Avenue in traffic, and again, it's queued up, you know, halfway back to the pub. You enter the roundabout, and then I immediately get off to go to the library, or take driving, or any other way up. But without like, uh, here, cutting across the pedestrian crossing, okay, between Town Hall and the South Captain. That's what I used to do, so that was safe. The, a, a, a particular police officer had a problem with people using the roundabout to just like, get out of our quadrant. And so then that's when I started to ask about these alternatives, because I don't know who remembers, but back in December, when I, people were talking about this. Mr. Winter said that he he wouldn't raise the Fifth Avenue at all. In the full report, which is not in our agenda package, it does say in there that. In general, the roundabout is somewhat of a safer option because of the fact that it's a wide view for Fifth Street.
Fifth Street, yeah.
Street, correct, it was, Sixth Street was not analyzed, that because you, you have people already willing to enter. I truly think, my personal, this is not a resident's thing. That the safest way is to go in front of the art studio, turn right, get into the roundabout, and then get off where you. And in in just getting that one block, which is very short, from the art studio to the Sixth Avenue. I can get over to the side of towns to do anything, when Fifth is open, then I can go up to Fifth to cross over if I wanna go like.
But you cannot drive it on license. Right. Or a means.
Oh, I understand, I understand, it's not against state statute, it's just not in our, so my, so it's just safety. I I will not take.
I always say, if that would be a safe statute, you're not licensed to go through the street, I don't take them free.
State statute, there's any streets within a town that has a speed limit of, is it thirty-five or thirty-nine, please?
Uh, I, I'd like to look back.
Okay, well, it's, I think it's thirty-five miles per hour, any streets in a town or county area. That has speed limits of less than thirty-five are allowed to legally by state statute. Be designated by a town as a golf cart friendly company, or a vehicle that is untapped. Not involved with you, because for vehicles, they go a hundred and twenty miles per hour. Thanks, Mark, I'm sure we have some, so my questions, and then the solution, how do you think? We have, like, at the crosswalk, if people can click the button, cross it already. Why couldn't we do that for say two reasons at Magnolia and at Eighth, instead of changing them, why could we just have something? That people can push, so that people will stop, so the doctors will feel proud.
Yeah, I have not seen that, um.
I think, yeah, I asked.
I mean, I wonder if a, a, like, a visit to the villages might show some sort of w- w- lighting type. Whether it's a, a, a war, a detectable surface, kind of like you have for your car. Um, they probably have stuff like that that will activate lights, but currently, what you're talking about is a R R F B. Um, Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, and those are, those are approved for use for pedestrians, um.
They're not.
They are not currently approved for golf carts, I'm not, i- i- it's not, your idea makes sense, right? Like, I can see how that would work, I haven't seen it in use, and I don't think that those devices are currently approved for that purpose.
Alternatively, it's that something, but you're right, it's not anywhere else, it's like, it's just a safety reason.
Yeah.
We have our special flash.
Find a way to get a place for people to reach over and.
Right.
Pu- push a button somehow, but I've I've not seen it in in quite a scene.
Okay, I just thought, yeah.
I like the idea, but, um, we spent a lot of money putting it in roundabouts. To improve the flow of traffic there, so, you know, putting cross, crossing lights for golf carts. Is like a stoplight slash stop sign, and defeats the purpose of roundabouts and and traffic, you know, flow of control to some place, so.
I mean, I think of, I I I think the reality is, crossing, golf carting on Sixth Avenue is. Sketchy, no matter which effect it is. It's tricky, tricky road. Curved there. Traffic queuing and stacking and the fact that, just want to move through there. Definitely go, see for whatever reason on Main Street, I don't know if that's a, a valid, uh. That's supported by any data, but. Definitely seems like the options are, so, any of those suggested options. In the, in, except for name. But, six is, if you talk about, I don't know that there's a great choice there, period. Uh, but the, the data, and even experts, were. Magnolia, and that's the way I can tell, we, we have even these, for a reason. So when things go south, you've got some backing other than, you're not to be able to where you want to put it. That doesn't hold up very well. I have experience. So I would be.
I mean, my, 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 my thought would be that the, the reality is, and 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 maybe Sixth Avenue. Roundabout does give you a look at, because it is always stacked with a queue, except for if you're coming from, you know, fourth street. So, it is the safest option, and then you wouldn't need to cross even that other of the other two locations, if we could come out of the art studio. And go into the roundabout, at Sixth Avenue, and then get off where we need to go. Then we don't need to cross anywhere, Sixth Street, which is stopping traffic, and we don't need to cross. I mean, there's a crossing down on Eleventh Street, but you have to go through the divergery south to get, get to, so you don't need to. I did talk with the chief, uh, back in September of last year regarding flashing lights that you suggested me. And one of the things that, I mean, I talked about is that you can't, it's not really safe. To have a, like, if it was a pedestrian and a golf cart crossing down this angle of patients, if you did, golf carts would obviously need to yield to pedestrians. As if they were a vehicle, but us not being able to go on Main Street, it's not a state statute, it is a. A self-made problem, if you wanna call it that, because it's a town or that we have the power to. We could eliminate both those options, if we could allow people that need to go in and out of that quadrant. To be able to go just between, and it's a police station also, so, I mean, in general, I think people are like, or whether they're going in front of it. Police station, whether they're heading south, so it would be an option that could eliminate both of the other.
My concern is liability will be another, on, on all golf carts, you know, especially on Main Street, and that school everywhere else is. A, maybe we, maybe technically legal to do. But is it the right thing to do, the liability, because. How many times have you seen a kid that's twelve or thirteen years old driving a golf cart around here, often?
Oh, where?
Exactly, so, I'm, I'm real hesitant on, on trying to add anything, and I'd be more. More in line, knowing we really need to look at stacking everything, because it's a liability again. And we're a little too sa- society, um, and everybody looks around with a bang, except me, just. And, I think we need to really look at the liability and say, you know.
So, I also think that we, we went down this path to look, we went down this path to look at our own territory crossing.
So I also think that we, we went down this path to look, we went down this path to look at our own current process. Now we're having discussions about golf carts on Main Street, changing the ordinance. I mean, it, it seems to me that we're not in any good. So I, uh, take the information, digest it. Council needs to think about what they really want to accomplish here for the most. Golf cart discussion. Supporter of golf carts. Was. Council will be put in place. It's a great thing, but we also. You're being smart about what we do. My feeling is that. We don't, we don't matter if a, front of us, so we may need to make that decision or. The process. Right. I also think we need to, like. That we ask the right questions based on the, the. So.
Come on, let's see, take this right.
Sorry.
What else do we think we should have?
If you're talking about rebranding ordinance, we need to get a whole different conversation. And just. Say I'm gonna drive down one block and that block's gonna be okay, the next block's gonna be okay. And that's, that sounds like personal preference. It doesn't sound comprehensive plan for the entire.
And here is a reminder. The solution consists today to. Play your. Which were writing those ones, we're really nice to, you know, to do that. As a way to blow speaking. Which a lot of folks interest in. Several of us.
I don't think that's a good part. We do have committee that's meeting next week for sign. And, uh, right, like, it's not giving decisions about the golf carts. I can, and, and, so to talk about. And I think that's where, that would have to be fixed, but, uh, y'all probably later to come.
I mean, I think that we want the safest place for everything we've got. That's the safest place.
Right. So I think, I think deals are very bad with many persons. And then we have to figure out, and I think we.
I thought you wrote the book.
And, yeah, that's usually on the.
I mean, I just, I, you, if, if the council disagrees and they feel like they're ready to, to make a decision on this, I would certainly. If that, they, that I made that for them.
They make a decision on, this is a roundabout for sure. They.
I can, I just, I just.
I agree.
Counsel, are we good? You have a big letter.
Well, I'm just a special night of any of them.
Moving along. Thank you, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Mike.
But I said thank you when you first came up. I, I, I didn't see you fun. So. Obviously, we can add that a little more conversation.
I would invite council members to maybe go for a ride, maybe not the key, oh, town's one of the left. Maybe some of the other residents count. If you realize that people can get a proper perspective of somebody who actually is using the golf carts to try and quickly travel. Or whoever will take it out, Town Hall for meetings or the different events that we have in town, because. You know, we, we do say where golf carts comes to the community, but if you don't actually. Own a golf cart, have the opportunity to drive them some of those areas, maybe they. I think people would like to, uh.
Well, I, I'm happy to let anybody most recent, recent try it. Council, nice to have you. Our town council meeting minutes, uh, for July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve, uh, there's approval, councilperson David, second, first Williams, we're going to councilperson.
I'm.
All right.
I'm.
I, I, Adrian. So this, uh, I didn't need these requirements, this resolution, this is a discussion for resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash zero creates opposition to Senate Bill, uh, one eighty. Um, what council is being asked and considered tonight is a resolution. Town council of the town, one year for, uh, price of participation in a lawsuit seeking. Among other things to be fair, but the imposition of a blanket statewide provision on the expense. Of home rulatory over land use and zoning regulations by Senate Bill one eighty. Unconstitutional, she'll be in jail. Katie Weiss, Seroda, Healthman, Pearl and Pyramid, uh, to prosecute the lawsuit, the tidy floor. And, uh, to council room, listen. On this side of yours.
Yes, sir.
Katie.
So one of the bills that was signed in the legislative session, the Senate Bill one eighty. And that bill added at the very end, a, um, at the very end of the session, so it wasn't really. There weren't folks really able to contest it kindly. Um, it added a prohibition for local governments to initiate ordinances that imposed. More restrictive or burdensome comprehensive plan amendments. Land development regulations or procedures concerning review. Um, approval, auditions, of cycles, development permits. Or development orders for the period commencing August first, twenty twenty-four through October first of twenty twenty-seven. But really. Bad thing about this new bill is it, or the new law, is it takes back. Work that's been done by local governments on comprehensive plan amendments, ordinances. Anything that they put in place, even if they're trying to fix a problem that was caused by a storm. Like if they tried to put more restricted, uh, roofing requirements in place. Then someone comes in and challenges it and they have to, the, the local government has to undo it, or they force. Attorney fees and all kinds of different problems that will come up. So the. Law firm that initiated the Form One, Form Six. Uh, lawsuit in your, a couple of years ago. Sends an email out a few weeks ago saying, hey, we're gonna try to get. Local governments to participate in this. So I just sent it to Robert thinking it might be something that enters, enters to the town. One thing that has affected the town so far is your treaty ordinance that. Some of yours, one of you board worked very hard on, is actually. Very well written, and I helped a little bit with it, and your Brad worked on it a lot, so. This, this town has not been affected horribly to date with this new bill, but we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. Um, Orange County has their whole entire comprehensive plan amendments. Has been cha- been denied by the state because of this law, so it's just, it's kind of a mess.
Yeah, it is, it is a mess and very difficult, you know. I think this is, we continue to be regularly limited. What we can do to keep our community, our community. Yeah, we can't get sideways to the developer, yeah, do your own. Three ordinance was that would restrict development. Um, we have to present every side of the point and defend every side of the point. There is two. Um, anything they're adding on in the last minute, after everything's been looked at, after everyone's had the opportunity to weigh in. With that on the last minute. Quite frankly, it's. So, it's not like it's considered transparent, but. We have to operate. Transparent mode, we have to open our books to everybody. Like to come to them. Seen this already a third year locally. It's. It's terrible. And you have to continue to engage legally, but that's the only ways. It's seemingly moving along some of these, so it is, it's in terms of council for consideration. Was to be even more, more successful, uh, with the Form Six. Um, so, lawsuit, that was unfair. Um, so any, any, any questions that we had answered? So many. I think Joe will be.
Yeah, I, we did that show, put, put it to favor, maybe, what do you, what do you feel like the? I mean, control?
Yes, they're, they're already more of your home world power. And for instance, your, like I said, your tree ordinance, the new one you just did, there shouldn't have been an issue whatsoever with adopting that, but. We put a halt on that, just so it would not expose the town to. Legal fees and challenges by developers.
That's, that's just the idea from a chat, it's no bias when they're inside, but. That's the thing, the idea.
I have a quick question. Do you know, uh, number of participants or who's participating in this?
Not yet. When I called, I called Jamie and asked him, um, what happened if the town was to opt in and was to give. The ten thousand dollar payment that they're requesting. And he's, because they're saying, what, what he said was they expected to have at least ten plaintiffs. In order to get the lawsuit going. And he said that he doesn't expect that there's going to be any issues with getting the number of plaintiffs that they have, but he didn't have any specifics for me at the time.
And, and just before you start, I think it also noted that. If it were appealed, there was a.
Oh, that's correct.
Say, sign, just in full transparency, council, you essentially need. If you were to go through this, you're essentially stuck.
And there would be a refund if they are not able to move forward, if they don't get enough.
Absolutely. He, that was one thing, and I, I think I revised the or, the resolution specifically stayed back because it didn't in the first place.
Additional questions, council, honestly?
Mayor Voweth, to, uh, motion to approve, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
A motion to approve by councilperson David, seven, by councilperson David. Further questions, comments, or concerns, council? See none, we can vote in councilperson's turn. Hi, Tommy.
Hi.
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 Have a marching orders, uh, directed there. Thank you. And I appreciate the explanation and, uh, the ultimate house give pause. Next up, our contracts and agreements, approval of IPO two zero seven, this is for that, the Magnolia Street Drainage Improvements Committee. So, yes, so this is an option and little. Your, your, your.
So before Chris begins his presentation, this is obviously under the FEMA FM grant, H M G P grants, just like our other projects. And so their IPO was to handle the engineering and administrative, um, parts of this base of this frame. So with that, if you have any questions about this, let us know. This is reimbursable under our E N grant.
Thank you, Tony. Um, good evening, council members. My name is Chris Davidson. I'm a road engineer with Kenley Horn. I've had the privilege of working with the town of Windermere with. Alan Mike for the last five years. Um, this is my first, uh, council meeting, so thank you for allowing me to be here. Um, so this IPO number two oh seven is for the Fourth Avenue and Magnolia Street Drainage Improvements Project. If you are familiar with the Butler and Bestie Drainage Improvements Project, this one's very similar. We will be regrading the dirt roads of Fourth Avenue, Oakdale and Magnolia from Oakdale Street. To Lake Street Park adjacent to Lake Down. Um, this regrading of the dirt roads will be within the existing dirt road footprint. And will be facilitating water into some roadside swales. That will collect that water and run it down to, uh, the Lake Street Park adjacent to Lake Down. Um, as Tanya was mentioning, this is an F D M H M G P, uh, grant funded project. Um, with a total lump sum of that grant for the. Design, plans, production, and coordination services being seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred four dollars. Um, which we have, uh, matched up with our IPO. Now, I, I can take you task by task through this IPO for the project, um, and can just open it up to questions. Thank you.
Council, any questions?
Just a quick question, Chris. Do we, do we have a wrong on the poll? Have you done any of that work yet?
We do not. Yeah, we're using a concept, uh, prepared by Michael Boloro. So once we get into the project, we'll be able to get, uh, an actual construction pass.
Okay, and then, uh, staff for the bid assistance services, what does that entail? Is that for, uh, the service, once we take it to?
Task for, the, the assisting services is once we are done with our design of the project. We will assist the town in preparing the bid package to, um, open it up to contractors, or we'll.
That's awesome.
Yes, sir, because under this particular grant program, the specifics are incredibly detailed. If we miss one. We don't get the grant back. So we do use them for that to ensure it is meeting all state federal statutes that are required to meet.
And H M G P, while that's the university that, right, this is.
Yes.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions? See, we have a motion to approve IPO. The seven. Motion to approve, motion group, first then, what I said, second, first, ladies. Indemnity, councilperson's needs.
Right.
All right.
I am.
Uh, I'm. Counsel. So is our third amendment to the employment contract, he will tell the engineer, uh, keep the police data. Council, we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion group, councilperson David. Okay. Sorry, sorry, councilperson David. Council, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding, uh, this appointment? See none, we can vote in with councilperson's turn.
Bye.
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 Thank you, council, and, uh, thank you very much to. T-Ball and, hey, everything you do for our community.
I'm just happy you didn't want to help.
And, uh, we could get cracking on, uh, dumpster nine.
You can start with the corner of Southern Forest.
Oh, we said, I understand. And I, you got. Those. You give yourself material. I mean, they, they just do what they can, so. Thank you, Bob White. All right, next up, the, when I'm excited about, this is the forty-five percent design, uh, Windermere Road being through roundabout. Need to have a discussion on this.
I do know.
Yeah, sounds good, let's do it.
Mr. Davidson is here to present this this evening as well.
Yeah, me very much.
Well, I'm here to say to him.
I'll keep it short. Um, as you are aware, uh, town received appropriations from the state of Florida for the designing construction of the roundabout at. Windermere Road and Main Street slash McGuire Road. Um, Kenley Horn has completed our forty-five percent design plans for the roundabout. Which include the, um, roadway geometry, typical sections, cross-sections. Um, pedestrian and drainage improvements, as well as the signing of a marking plan for the roundabout. Um, we are on schedule to meet the state appropriations funding deadline. Um, and to do that, we would like to move forward with our ninety percent plant's production. Um, the next phase, ninety percent will involve temporary traffic control plans. Some more detailed grading around the roundabout for the contractor, um, as well as some quantity takeoff and cost estimates. Uh, so, yeah, I, I can walk you through the plans, but it seems like we wanna open it up to questions. Council, do you have any reviews or we can?
I don't have any questions, I'll serve.
Um, so I, I did speak with, uh, Mr. Armstrong, who lives on that corner, had a large oak tree, I just wanna say for the record that. He is okay with the guy with the exception of the golf carts we talked about today. Um, so I see that on all four of, I don't know which probably the medians that are the triangle shape that's at each square. Right. Um, that there are these signs for the streets, Windermere Road, the Fire Road, Spooner Way and Fire Road. And according to the drawings. They are five feet by two foot in size and will be placed in the median. Um, and at a height of two feet above that, those are very, very large signs that seem more appropriate. For an inner street rather than a little intersection like that. Which would also include one that's a spoon away at the entrance to the Marina Sub, Marina Bay South. So I was wondering if that was an accident because those were there, because we just have regular street signs on all of our other, um, ground.
Yeah, I, I agree that, that might maybe an accident there, um, and we'll listen to that.
That would be.
Yeah.
And, and the, 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 I'm concerned about looking at it and, and the maintenance of it and if somebody gets it, because, because.
We need something, people probably got a.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
They're no joke.
Off of the middle, people mall down.
Um, so, th- those signs, uh, do meet M U T C D, but they are likely for a larger type facility. So understanding the context of the roundabout and the town, we can definitely size those and use the per-town signage that you have. And that will be more consistent.
They, the ones in current intersections, I drove through it today, none of them are in those medians, all of them are just at the intersection. So we can keep it like that and, uh, that.
Yeah, we, we would just have to look and just make sure that it beats current standard, but we can definitely look into it and make those updates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh, follow questions. So during additional discussion with, with the Marina Bay homeowners association. Uh, it was agreed upon. Part of this development, so move that sign. Uh, and relocate it, uh, to the adjacent size. Is that gonna be included in ninety percent of the time drawings for the, uh?
We are working with the town of Windermere and our landscape architectural team for the design of that sign. How, I'm not sure if our plan was to put it in ninety percent plans.
Yes. So that, that we were doing as a separate IPO, Tony, and we'll work in our landscape architect to do that proposal. It would not only include the removal of the existing sign and, um, construction installation, the new sign. And also the landscaping. And also the landscaping, any type of impacts that we have in those areas adjacent to the uh intersection as well. Uh, my thought is we probably want to share it to you, with you prior to ninety percent. Although we haven't talked to staff yet, maybe we could provide some drawings of just that particular aspect. Prior to ninety, so that we get some initial feedback, and then we will incorporate it with our formal ninety percent supplemental for the town's review and approval. If that's acceptable.
Yeah, I think uh we need to reach out.
Sure, and it, like I said, it's very um subjective, so definitely want to get the ideas of the way it looks. Our turn intent is kind of match the, the context of the field that's out there, and that's kind of our starting point. Yeah. Because I believe, Tony, it's, it's a, it's a brick sign, right?
It's a brick sign and that's uh, right away, a piece of part vision that's. Being donated project, so it could be included in the roundabout. Do with that, the sign.
Correct, and, and talking with my landscape architect, we were gonna replace it with a similar brick type sign, just as the initial idea flush. And we'd have to pick, right now it's in the middle, so we'd have to kind of pick a quadrant, whether it's um southeast or northeast. A quadrant where we would put the new sign.
They're supposed to be on the both.
If we um. Does council have any additional questions? See none, looking for a motion to approve. The forty five percent design, uh moving the new road to the nature ground now. If all right. Um, begin voting, Councilperson Bees. All right.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Thank you, council. I'm gonna thank staff, um, our engineers, um, in particular. Apparently, quickly, uh, and we've done our job for the city of town. Making this really important, attracting possibly. Thank you to everyone as well as the state.
Thank you.
And just real quick.
Yes.
Chris, good job. Next up, it's our purchasing policy section, uh number twenty eight, uh update.
Yes, sir. In order for us to continue receiving federal grants, we had to update our purchasing policies. Uh, we did. The ones that were in the agenda were drafted by uh. Jennifer Trevino. We did have Deputy Floor of Fair Robinson go ahead and review this. We received this today. So the one that's in front of you right now is the one that was reviewed by our town attorney. So it asks that the one that was handed to you today be the one that would be adopted.
So make a motion uh to approve with, with the changes listed on this version.
Right, the changes on the blue. So one can print out two pages or three pages. Typical attorney. Yes, sir. Evidence required is in the fourth statutes or it's in the category.
Okay, motion to approve, Councilperson Bees. Thank you, Councilperson Bees, and voting, ruling, Councilperson's turn.
Bye.
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 Thank you, anything against the. Set up as our first renewal of on-call in-planning services agreement with William Trent, staff that commends approval. Until you have the opportunity to renew your work. Um, voting for a motion to approve. Councilperson David, second. If you start off, we're gonna get to you soon. Councilperson Bees, second. Questions, comments, concerns, council. Uh, can you vote in, Councilperson Bees?
Hi.
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 That brings us to the end of our agenda, any um, and council, please on the voice.
Burgery, the church, or the church to have a say, um. Um, anyway, we have a garden, yeah, I think it's a garden, the garden club. So we're all gonna meet next Wednesday, um, right after the ceremony, the centennial, um, medallion, so. That's all you say on that. Um, right after the, um, six thirty.
Want to mention anything about the walk? I know you just kind of did, but since you're here, or since.
Here is the dedication of the audience and the dedication of the Central Park, but the. Walkway or whatever, you're gonna get a little bit, you've got some.
Yes, we have big scissors, they're in my office.
Anyway, very, anybody would be invited. I know there's an email going out and it's gonna be posted, literally posted on.
Thank you, CT, and thank you to the Centennial Committee and Parks and Recreation. So it's now sound, play a little. Another additional.
I'm uh, involved through board, we gave you a rule of volunteers who flipped out and came to the orange road. By, it looks like an orange road, they put it for five years next to orange road. So, thank you.
Right.
Oh yeah, just one, I know that the border county commissions is still looking at the redistricting maps. Um, District one, we can still remain in District one based on map two, which is the Washington two, two map. Um, it just ends pretty much north of us to Gopa, which means that District two would be Apopka. Winnebago, Acoe, Oakland. Um, it also includes a part of Pinedoz as well. So we would be excluded from the legacy municipalities. Due to the fact that Commissioner Wilson lives in District one, just right in our area, and they can't split up any municipalities. So unfortunately, with all the maps that have been submitted, we're looking like we're gonna be the only municipality in District one that would include very much all of our supplies.
Pretty much. Dominated. By, by white margin, and kind of without our uh Padres and we pause, that we typically. At challenges for values, sometimes we do, um, sometimes we don't, but often we do when we come together, and that's how we tend to get things. Different directions, like, um, the way the, the redistricting, District one maps look currently. Solo down there. They're full of door thousands. Um, in one of the fastest uh growing areas uh in states on the nations. It's gonna have some challenges for us if it's all that is.
Let your line town council and anyone here this evening, we will be having Bessie and Butler Shaw water project virtual meetings for pre-construction for the residents in that area. That's on August eighth, twenty fifth. We have left door neighbors for those that are in the inhabited area. And hopefully we get through those two meetings, and then have to get the right destroyer on September one of those projects. Um, and then the other project was the, the Ped Bridge, um, more trail project. We did receive several bids for that project. At the moment, we are going through the qualification of the candidates with DOT. We have an item list of about twelve to thirteen things we actually have to do and then. Put into the system for DOT to confer with or not confer with, or come back with our eyes on. So we're steadily moving through all of that process, and then hopefully we'll be bringing the Ped Bridge contractor to you for approval. After September town council meeting. If we can't get everything worked out with DOT, within that timeframe, it will come to you in October. I'm hoping by then, we'll be able to. One of the issues is they actually have to put me into the E O C portal so I can confirm that the main contractor, potential main contractor has submitted their information there. The only problem is they can't seem to get any access into. So that's all I have.
Uh, what's the time for the pre-farm meetings?
Six P M.
Okay, and then for the pedestrian bridge, we have a timeline. It did actually come in September. Uh, for our approval before it would actually be in the ground.
I do not have a timeline for that, because once we have an approval with the contractor, then with DOT, we have to negotiate a schedule with the contractor. We have to get DOT's approval on all of that too. So once we do, we'll bring you a schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
But in our next council meeting, we just have a general okay line progress, they said, and they've got so many projects going on now. Um, so rather than everybody, might just get a good idea, just to.
Yes.
You feel the questions and. Sometimes things are put out there that aren't exactly accurate in terms of. We don't control the water. It's not our job, we're not completely, we're not in his team.
Absolutely.
Orange County, those things are um. Sometimes your books don't change if you couldn't control all of this.
No, absolutely, we'll come with an update on that next evening.
Grow up in one place, it's always rolls on.
So I just have a really quick update on the dog houses. Yesterday, Nick and Summer found out that we have a new judge. So unfortunately, that has. Taken the. Set times for the summary judgment hearings off the table, because that judge doesn't have the ability. Have that then, so we're trying to get that rescheduled as quickly as possible, and they were supposed to have a um. Case management hearing this morning, which also got moved to tomorrow, so. I'm sure there will be more information provided, but they are gearing up right now for trial and have done. Whole lot of work last month, both depositions and reviewing thousands of documents and. If you have any specific questions, please feel free to reach out to me or.
Thank you for the.
Uh, thank you again for the vote of confidence there. I think uh Robert and I worked well together, I think. One day you just said, oh, I think you're out of contract. We had, we had no clue, so. Uh, so thank you guys again. Uh, school started back, we're uh in the process of finding, finding our grants and stuff, hence one of the reasons we had to upgrade. Uh, some of our policies on that. Uh, you guys saw the information on Sunday. Uh, the, the arrest will probably have a lot more fallout, but our funds on the bill is off as that, also we're gonna pull a passive job on that. Uh, so, producers and durable units there, actually took that off, took the super job, also last night. We're at with another incident, so that's not. The conversion yet, so and the Orange County jurisdiction, don't worry, then, uh, respond to that.
Where do you, any from uh U S, sir? Council, if you additional for the busy or. See none, we will overturn our.